Roll call to City Council for the meeting of Wednesday, August 7th at 9:30 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancuso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise from a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, again, we ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, again, both locally as well as our global community and family. We ask that we remember all those who've lost loved ones since the last time when we were in these chambers. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us wisdom, give us the proper information, so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple minutes from the previous meeting, and bills for payment on Friday and next Friday. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancuso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Today I present you with the 2013 mid-year financial report for the city of Erie. The figures in this report continue to reflect the stability in municipal operation and cost control, as well as the advantage of the transparent budget and spending system we've implemented. It shows the continued commitment of all departments to stay within budgetary constraint, find new efficiencies, and to keep our operations affordable to our taxpayers. Once again, all of the department heads, bureau chiefs, and employees of the city of Erie are to be commended for their vigilance in these areas. My administration has achieved a stability which has allowed us to keep the cost of doing business within budget each year. We have also continued to find new operational savings to minimize the impact of increased costs of doing business. This year will be no different. At a time when most cities across America are experiencing significant financial distress and in many cases are on the brink of bankruptcy, our pledge to create an efficient, cost-effective operation has kept Erie away from similar perils. Because of our success in redesigning the way municipalities do business, we have avoided the consequences associated with insolvency and state intervention. The challenge of remaining viable is ever-present. We continue to cope with the ongoing decline of our revenue base and the need to adequately support our operation in the face of increasing costs. As the financial issues facing the federal and state governments continue to grow, it is evident that we will not be receiving any additional operational funding support from these sources. Therefore, we can continue to find new ways to do more with less and to control our costs in every department, so as to provide the best level of safety and services for our constituents at the lowest possible cost. Looking at the figures within the report itself, first on the revenue side, you will see the tax collections, both real estate and earned income, are coming in as anticipated in the budget. In fact, all revenues are being collected as expected. This is a departure from the trend of the last couple of years that saw real estate and income taxes, state reimbursements, and other line items affected by the market economy lag behind budgetary expectations in the first half of the year. We interpret this as an indication that the national economy is beginning to recover, and we are seeing more of our revenues collected in the normal course. One exception to this is that the building permit fees are down significantly from anticipated levels. We expect this is only temporary. The ongoing work at the Union Square Development, the redevelopment of the GAF site, the newly announced construction projects on the Erie Insurance Campus, our neighborhood revitalization projects, and our ongoing economic development programs will help spark construction projects as well as increase our tax base for future long-term viability. For example, this year, we are realizing $430,000 in additional revenues from Lurda properties that are coming onto the tax rolls. We will collect an additional million over the next three years and two million over the next seven years. This is growing our tax base and expanding future revenue streams to fund our increased costs of doing business. On the expense side, we continue to see significant results in our cost savings programs. In the areas of police and fire overtime, which are a major budgetary cost each year, we are seeing large-scale savings. At mid-year, police overtime is down approximately 10% from last year, and fire overtime is down approximately 30%. These large savings help us to counterbalance the increased cost of doing business. We are also realizing significant savings in the area of employee healthcare. With most recent police and fire contracts, all employees are now contributing the cost of healthcare benefits at the level of 15%. This is substantial savings in helping to defray our ever-increasing cost of providing healthcare benefits. In the area of public works, recent upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility has made our plant operations much more energy-efficient. We are already seeing a 10% savings in our energy use, which translates into approximately $300,000 in savings each year. In our paving program, the purchase of a new milling and paving truck last year allowed us to do more of our street paving in-house. This has saved significant dollars on our cost of paving contracts, and these funds are utilized to increase the number of miles of streets we pave each year. This has made our street paving program much more cost-effective and efficient and maximized the benefit to our taxpayers. The implementation of an aggressive safety program throughout the operation has yielded significant cost savings in the area of injury claims. Our lost time claims and large claims over $100,000 have decreased drastically. This year, our workman's compensation claims are down almost 50%. This has saved substantial money on our risk management fund while maximizing employee safety in all areas of the operation. Finally, it has been our goal since the beginning of this administration to pay down our aggregate debt, so dollars previously going to debt service can be utilized for operational purposes. We have made serious headway. Over the past seven and a half years, we have paid down $23.2 million of our debt, freeing up $1.3 million for use and operational expenses. These, along with other efforts to maximize our efficiency in all departments, have allowed us to control our cost and counteract the increased cost of doing business each year throughout our operation. As you look at this report, you will see that all departments are expected to again meet their targeted budgets. This proves that we have been able to determine the true cost of doing business, budget accordingly, and manage our operation in order to stay within expected expenditures. This is a pledge that we, as an administration and council, promised our taxpayers seven and a half years ago, and we have fulfilled that promise each and every year. Our projections are only estimates but are based on trends we have seen throughout the course of this administration. There may be deviations in the second half of the year, but we still expect all departments to operate within budget constraints again this year. My staff and I will be available to address any questions or concerns you may have after you have had the opportunity to digest this information. I thank you for your ongoing support of this administration as we work together to make Erie a strong, financially vibrant community. We will continue in our mission to make Erie a model for cities across the Commonwealth of how they can succeed despite the challenges facing all communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if anyone on council has any questions at this time for the mayor or Paul Wittenwalter. Feel free.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
How are you today? Looks like a good report. I just had a quick chance to look at the numbers, and it looks like the end of the year is going to end up with a slight surplus. Is that right?
At this point in time, that's what we're projecting.
Projected? Hundred ninety or whatever.
Yeah.
About there. And your under-revenue a little bit looks like primarily on the real estate taxes side, a little bit of expecting to collect a little less than budget in the real estate.
As you remember, each month when we've gone through the financial reports at Finance Committee, we've talked about how they started lagging behind back in February, and we were almost a million dollars or so, a million and a half dollars at that point in time. And they've been catching up. With being conservative in those estimates, we're showing a little less than where we budgeted, but if the catch-up continues, then as the mayor said in his address, you know, these are estimates based on historical trends. Now, if the catch-up happens, then we'll hit budget, and if not, it may still lag a little bit behind.
Okay. And these particular items, like the real estate taxes, if we don't collect them this year, we will collect them in a future year as a prior.
Correct.
Prior tax line item. Okay. And then the expenses seem to be coming in under budget.
Moderately, yes.
Yeah, a little bit under budget. That's good. Okay. Any surprises or anything in terms of grants or state pension aid or anything like that that we need to be concerned about?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we've been adequately prepared for the trends in the state pension aid and some of those other things. You know, that's been something that's fluctuated over the years of the administration, and we've had to deal with throughout, so it's certainly nothing new.
Nothing new.
And I think we're prepared for it.
And you speak to reducing our debt. Do you see a need going forward that we'll need to take out further bond issues or things in the future? Are you looking to scale back?
Not in the immediate future. As you look at the history and prior administrations, there was many bonds, many borrowings.
Right.
That added to the aggregate debt. Our goal was to begin to pay that down in large chunks to free up operational dollars. We've only had one bond throughout the eight years of this administration, seven and a half years of this administration, and that was the bond two years ago for the capital improvements, which was a comparatively small bond when you look at some of the previous borrowings. So, no. Our primary mission is to continue to pay down the debt. If we have to utilize small bonds for capital, certainly it's not going to be an annual type of borrowing, and it's going to be very much marshaled to do what we have to do without excess, to continue to be paying down more than we're taking so that we continue to make headway on bringing that aggregate debt down. Because I think, as I said, going all the way back to when we started, I think that our debt service payments each year were too high for what we were trying to do. And so my goal is, you know, you're going to need borrowing periodically over the course, not just of this administration, but of administrations to come in the future for different types of things. My goal is to get our borrowing where it can be maintained at a level where the debt service is at an annual rate, that it's prudent to make those borrowings for what you have to do for the long-term capital needs, without hamstringing the operation with these large debts. And that means getting a lot of the debt that was taken without that particular philosophy paid down.
Under control. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor, one area that jumped out at me as I was reviewing this briefly, under the SOAR department, I noticed that suburban SOAR charge revenue is significantly below what we had expected. Is there something that happened there that's causing the revenue to be down?
Well, that, you know, water usage is down throughout those areas, and that is, you know, largely a function of the weather and things of that nature. So, it's my understanding that that is more of a function of circumstance, probably shorter-term circumstance.
So our arrangements with the suburban users of our service haven't changed?
No, they haven't.
Rate schedules haven't changed or something else?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
To continue on with the meeting this morning, we have a junior councilman with us today, Hardy McCollum, sponsored by Councilman Bob Murzky, so I'll let Bob have the honors and introduce our junior councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce council and the members of the community to Hardy McCollum. Hardy's an incoming senior at East High School, and he approached me earlier in the year, probably around May, about his interest in politics. And so I said, why don't you come down to council and see what it's about? And so through the, you know, time, the timing was right this month with his work schedule that he was able to make it. Hardy, if you want to grab the microphone, I'll allow you to introduce yourself to the community.
Hi, I'm Hardy McCollum. I go to East High School. I'm on the ASL team, the Academic Sports League team, and I want to do teaching or political science.
Hardy's a very good student at East, and we're very proud of him. He also, if you're ever down at Ricardo's, he's one of the workers down there, so you might see him down there. All right. Hardy, thank you for being here today.
Do we have any repository sales this morning? Any repository sales? Hearing none. Mr. Clem.
Yeah, we have a citizen to be heard, Debbie Keyone.
Morning, council. I'm sure you are getting to recognize me these days. I'm here again for the anti-tethering ordinance. I thank you just for your time and attention again this morning. The last time I attended a meeting, there were some concerns about how you were going to actually enforce the ordinance and how other municipalities were doing it. Knowing how busy you all are in your daytime jobs, I went ahead and prepared a questionnaire and sent it out to the municipalities that have passed such an ordinance. So I'll let you folks read what's attached. Their answers are attached and their contact information if you have any questions for them. Also attached, some of them sent me their door hangers or a handout that they give the folks when they go to the residence to tell them that there's now an ordinance and they cannot chain their dogs. And also attached is the actual ordinance. Down at the bottom, the last item is Harrisburg's bill that was proposed and just passed on May 10th of this year, or sometime in May of this year. So Harrisburg now has passed an anti-tethering ordinance, which is very similar to the one that I have proposed that the city pass. So I hope that this information will answer a lot of your questions, address a lot of your concerns. I know enforcement was an issue. Remember that the Anna Shelter has recently put a cruelty officer in place that can help the city's dog warden follow up on some of the calls. This officer has the authority to seize the dog if the dog is in really bad shape. A lot of the people who answered my questionnaire said that they find that they're not having a problem enforcing. Once they go by and they explain the ordinance, the people are making provisions for the dog or turning the dog over if they don't. A lot of people by that time don't care about the dog. If they do and they don't know what else to do, then there are organizations here in the city that will work with these people to help educate them and get them some fencing. I know that one of you was concerned that they might turn the dogs loose. West Virginia, the entire county has passed such an ordinance. Their dog warden told me that out in the rural districts, in the farm areas, they turn, a few people have turned the dogs loose, thinking they're fine to run around in the country. But he said it has not happened in the city of Charleston. People just don't turn the dogs loose to run around. Overall, I think you'll find that the dog wardens have said that it's been a good thing in their community and has eventually cut down on nuisance calls. In the beginning, they got some extra calls because people were calling in about chained dogs, but now that people are no longer chaining their dogs, the calls have actually gone I know that the last time I was here, Jessica Lybrook was here with me. She's from Erie Animal Network. You'll recall that she put together a survey that the citizens of the city of Erie passed, and it was the very high majority, I don't remember now, the percentage of people in the city that would like to see this passed. She's also the liaison with Dogs Deserve Better, and that organization will help people with funding to put up some fencing if that's what they decide they want to do with their dog. Today, Sarah Morosco has come with me. She's the director of Erie Animal Watch. She's going to let you know briefly what her organization is doing in the community about cruelty to animals. And I believe that if council will pass such an ordinance, any one of these organizations, including myself, will be there to help you in whatever way we can to educate the public about the anti-tethering ordinance. So I'm just asking you to again give this some consideration, maybe get something passed if you're thinking of doing it before it gets real cold again, dogs again are dying of frostbite, and our citizens are being arrested for trying to save them. So thank you for your efforts in this matter.
Mr. President? Can I have a question for Ms. Keyone? Ms. Keyone, two things. You mentioned that for enforcement, that the Anna Shelter had, is employing a cruelty officer. Did they agree that that person could help to enforce an anti-tethering ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe she's spoken to a couple of council members, maybe Mel Witherspoon. I think she's talked to the mayor. So she can't come here because she's the director of a 503(c) organization, and her attorney has advised her that she can't lobby, but she has been supportive through this to me.
And the city's animal cruelty officer, Culbertson, would he, have you spoken with him about enforcing an ordinance, or has he made any comments, you know, during this discussion on whether he'd be able to help enforce such an ordinance?
I have not. I've contacted him a couple times, but he's not returned my calls, so I would be very willing to sit down with him for a few minutes and talk to him.
Sure. Yeah, we certainly would need to engage him. Okay. Thank you very much.
And then if Sarah can have a couple of minutes.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Thanks so much for letting me come today. My name is Sarah McCosco. I am the founder and volunteer for Erie Animal Watch. You have one of these. She handed to you if you want to refer to them. Basically, in a nutshell, is we are here to help the community. We understand that Merle and the new cruelty officer at Anna can't do everything and they can't be everywhere. So we are fully a volunteer, okay? We're not authority figures by any means, and we go out in the community and we help people. If cruelty has been out and they are considered compliant, we step in, and we see what we can do to help the owner and the pet make things better for them. We've done searches for lost animals. We've gotten in the community with feral cats. We have volunteers that have, you know, feral colonies set up they can take care of. We also do dumped animals. Anna's been working with us a lot, and we bring the animals to them to give them a second chance. But I will tell you, because I am face-to-face in the community, I am getting my hands dirty, and we do go to homes and we do build relationships, the biggest outreach we get from the community is dogs that are chained and tied up due to the way they live, you know, certain things like they don't have food and water, or they're aggressive, or their shelter is not good. And we go out and we build these relationships with these owners, and we find out what is causing this situation. And then we make it better, and we find ways to make that inconvenience between pet and owner not inconvenient anymore. But we also get out in the community, and we also spread awareness on how the system works, who to call based on where they live. I think a lot of the times, the community is afraid to call, or they're afraid to step up, and so we try to eliminate that fear and give them the right facts. So on the back of that card, you'll see a bunch of the contact information based on where they live. We go out into the county as well. We have homes in Needville, McCain, that we have worked with, and this is a regular thing. I go out to a home today to like just check on how things are going. So there are people in the community who do want to help, and we're not solely relying on just authority figures to do things, but authority comes first. Once authority has been placed, then we step in to make sure that, you know, we can help out and see what we can do. So that's pretty much it. Basically, we're just a neighborhood watch for a class of their own, so we just get out there and just see what we can do. Spread some happiness, spread some cheer, but also educate these owners and see what we can do to improve the community, so. Any questions for me about what we do? Okay, but we're here to help, all right? Thank you.
Appreciate the effort.
Mr. President, I just had a quick comment about Debbie. I've been communicating with Debbie in the past, and I was going to have to set up a meeting with Rob Culbertson, so I'll give you a call, Debbie, and we could have a meeting together and kind of review some things, because I know you provide information in the past on this subject, and I want to ask a few questions and get your input. Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I'm sure. Good morning, Council. My name's Amy Compratore. I'm at 913 State Street, apartment 903 Palace Apartments. I come here with two issues today, actually. I'll talk to you about the bus in a second, but a young lady who is not here today asked me to come down and voice for her about this issue. Her name is Jane Gammet. She's a neighbor of mine. She lives in Palace Apartments, and she is in apartment 803. She's been having issues with a resident in apartment 802. We've tried to take this up to the landlord, actually Jane has, and what's been happening in 802 is that there's somebody that's using crack in there. The smoke is coming into her apartment as well, and the landlord is not doing anything about it other than recommending Jane to leave the premises. And I could not get that through my head because Jane's been a loyal resident for many, many years, and, you know, I just think that especially with a building that is also, a lot of people are Section 8, I myself am Section 8 in that building as well, as are quite a few other disabled elderly people, that perhaps there could be something looked into on this if not you could help resolve. I've tried to place calls into Mary Sorge, the owner of the apartments, have not gotten a call back yet. So that's one thing. The other thing is in regards to the buses. I attended all aboard Erie this week, yesterday, actually, and there was some interesting notes taken on use of different lines. The trolley has been decreased by 25% in use. There are no stops on, well, there are no shelters on Peach Street itself. There are stops on Peach Street, but there are no benches to accommodate on Peach. There are no, there's an overhang that a lot of people over there at EMTA and all aboard Erie seem to really want to make that that's the whole of Peach, and it's not. I'm sure you're aware that between Ninth and Tenth Streets on Peach, there's that overhang there with Erie Explosion. There's no benches there or anything that people to sit down on. I've noticed that we have a bit of, few bolted benches down on State Street. I was wondering, maybe we could place one of those kind of bolted benches down so they don't get removed, something like that, for the bus riders, especially come winter. I know people get cold and, you know, just it's the practicality of the situation. If this thing's going to continue in, with Peach and French, then we ought to make Peach and French livable places for the people. And not that I think that it's a good idea, but you already know my view on that. And in addition to which, I find it interesting that French Street has three shelters between Seventh and Eighth Streets, and those are the only shelters among that entire street, just nested on that one block. And then they have, of course, the one on Tenth, the new one that comes across Tenth. This is really weird in the essence of accessibility to people. This is really weird in the essence of accessibility to people. This is a really trying thing to figure out why, because I like to think, sometimes the more minds you have to gather on it with a committee, sometimes the better off you'll be, because you have the propensity to bounce off each other, say, "Well, you know, we should wait to do this, because, you know, we have to take care of this first." If we were really serious as a city about the move to Peach and French, I want to know why the sidewalks haven't been taken care of. I've noticed that the streets have, are starting to get paved. I hope you have Peach-French and the sections of 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th on your list as well. If not, I would hope that they would move to make it so. You know, we need to make the, especially on 7th and State, that's a crazy area for sidewalks and the disabled. You could imagine having a wheelchair and, you know, being... I'm sorry. Was that, am I taking, did I take too much time? I just wanted to, we'll have the public hearing in a couple of weeks. I have a lot more facts for you, and I'll present them then, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Mucy, and I live at 111 East 11 at Friendship Towers. I live on the 10th floor, and my apartment number is 1002. I thought it was a stupid idea to remove the buses off of State Street. I can understand the war on the shore and the Erie fests and that they have, and the barbecued ribs and that. They can move them to a different location, but permanently leaving them going up French Street and down Peach, I thought that was a dumb idea. They should have left them on State Street. And another thing, too, where on 11th and French, where they have the handicap, where they go down, I think they should replace them. And on the side, south side of the street, on 11th and French, on the west side of the street, where the sidewalk dropped down, I noticed it when I, with my wheelchair and that. I think all four of them on 11th and French should be replaced with newer handicap. I think that that would be a good idea. And on this side, when I notice when I'm going across the police station on this side of the street, the sidewalks kind of overlapped it a little bit, too. You should replace that, too, if there's money in the budget for it. And thank you for letting me speak, City Council.
Thank you, sir.
Does everybody have a copy of my presentation? Jill, you have a copy? All right, good morning. Good morning, my name is Joseph K. Corlett. I reside at 1708 Granada Drive, apartment 10, 16509. I am a catalytic economic development analyst. Those individuals and other officials of the lead team and organizations such as the Economic Development Corporation of Erie County, Erie Regional Chamber and Growth Partnership, the Redevelopment Authority, the United Way, and city and county bodies are spending multi-millions of dollars of taxpayers' money for projects that are not creating or producing the economic benefits and impacts needed for the city. For it seems the architects and planners of these massive and expensive projects fail to acknowledge and factor in, one, the cost of plant closings in Erie and Erie County, downsizing of wages, extreme sizable layoffs, such as the 950 employees at GE, hurtful impact of the brain drain, no influx of good-paying jobs or industry, and of course, the population decline. Now, look at three projects in the city. One under the Redevelopment Authority under the helm of the executive director, John Elliott. The Mercantile Building on 14th and State Street has been nearly empty since completed, and all amenities are still not completed. A government bailout was engineered at the 11th hour by moving the post office in on the first floor. This measure did not add any additional revenues to the tax base, only rental payments. Vacancies seem to be the largest percentage of occupancies, residents, due to the noise of the trains and traffic, insufficient parking, and poor amenities for those with incomes that could afford this property. The Redevelopment Authority under the former director, John Elliott, and the current executive director, Kim Green, those $170,000 condos between 12th and 14th on Peach and State are completed and sparsely occupied. Another eyesore in Erie. Here is an instance where this project is out of line with the Erie economy and market, and especially since our wages are in decline, and we've lost the high-powered jobs that could have supported the lifestyle that would live in the condos. The few who have incomes who could afford these condos have very little in this vicinity to support their lifestyle, like star restaurants, decent restaurants, cultural venues, open spaces or secure, safe streets. Beavification of the surrounding areas necessary and would be a plus, however, would still keep the property at as a risky investment. The Erie Civic Center Convention Authority, under the leadership of executive director Casey Wells. The GAL property is about to spend more mega-millions of dollar taxpayer dollars, yet according to Roger Richards, who came out of the woodwork, just to say, "The only plan is just to be a profit-making venture," as no formal business plans have been unveiled or developed as In estimation, adept and serious economic development planning seems to be the Achilles' heel for most of the projects developed in Erie by those responsible, because they failed to create projects that, one, produce viable tax revenue so needed by the city, based on the mayor's report, jobs, and growing our growing economy. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Corlett.
Morning, Council. Where's Cass? I guess nobody know, ain't nobody know. You know...
McDonald, could you please state your name?
Oh, y'all know me.
We know, yeah.
You probably dream about me. McDonald, property 19th and Reed. Is that okay now?
Perfect.
Okay. About that bridge out there, we've been bullcrapped a long time. Now you want to tear, you spent all the millions of dollars looking at it, now you want to tear it down. The peoples should gang up and beat the hell out of everybody that had something to do with that lie. Well, nothing but a lie, been lying all the time. Y'all know that that what was planned. That bridge need to be rebuilt. We need that bridge more than we needed the Bayfront Bridge, because our kids don't have no business out there on that road. They don't have no business out there. It would be safe, but you're not considering the kids. They don't seem to mean nothing. And then you look at the businesses down over there. You look at all that gas you have to burn there, go around that. That's, that don't quite jive with me. Somebody is trying to pull our legs, but it won't happen. The people should get together and really protest that. I mean vigorously. Don't be playing with it, because that ain't no, that ain't no plaything. If them kids walk across them tracks and one get killed, then what's going to happen? Oh, he had no business down there. You're supposed to be the leaders. You should make sure that that bridge be built. It would have been better if you'd have left it like it was, you know, instead of blocking it off so could nobody go about, go across it. It don't make sense to me, and it don't make sense to you, but somebody, somebody knew, I could see that from way back, bullcrapping around. We don't have no mayor like Tulio. Tulio would have went on and got that bridge built. I don't know what Joe's problem is, but he ain't no Tulio. And this is another thing I want to bring to your attention, and I spoke about it before. When these contractors come into town, or these that are here, before you sign that contract, you make sure they're going to hire some minorities. Minorities need jobs, too. You got to consider them. I mean, you let, you let them, they took some of my pension money, they took some of my social security. Where these foreigners coming in here? We're so damn good to them, it's pathetic. When our soldiers come back with an arm and a leg off, they're kicked in the butt. That don't make sense to me. They should be treated like the kings and queens they are. You're not going to risk your life, you're not going over there. They didn't have no business over there in the first place. It's all about that oil. All right, God, when God come, it's a whole lot of people's going to hell. If I go to hell, I want to go to a different hell than y'all, because you done lied, not only y'all now, we can go way down to Washington, Harrisburg. Look at what happened. They done, we're taxed again, a school taxed again. Oh, give me a break. You're just, they're just sucking the blood out of the poor people. We ain't got nothing. Your property taxing gone up? Ain't going to be nobody. I see why they bringing all them foreigners in here now, because the peoples here are leaving. I can't blame them, but I can't afford to leave. I wish they could. I'd have been gone long ago, and you wouldn't have to put up with me. What you're not putting up with me, you just send up there, listen, because what I'm saying probably don't mean nothing to you. But I tell you what, one of these days it'll come across your mind, I promise you that, because I could see further than here. You took the money from them sinners, you sent it to Martin Center over there, you had crooks over there. Ain't nobody went to jail. Them peoples up at Booker T., some of them went to jail. I'm not defending them. If they did wrong, they should go to jail, but you didn't send nobody to jail over that St. Martin. Plus, you, you built on over there, and it's hard to find somebody speaking English over there. Don't nobody understand that? Hell, if I was in charge, four sucker get on the boat, he would know how to talk English. When you go to the store, you think you're in a foreign country. I don't understand that crap.
Mr. McDonald.
They could be talking about, we gonna kill him when he go out of the door.
Mr. McDonald, if you finish up, your time did lapse. If you want to finish your point, thank you.
I don't know. I hope it's not a waste of time, me coming up here. I hope y'all think about some of the things that I'm saying. They go for all of you, you too, young man, you too, especially you, because you're young, and I hope you take a different trail always when you take that oath. Be honest about it, because you're taking an oath to God, and he's going to deal with all of you. Thank you for your...
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Okay, ordinances for final passage. Council filed ordinance 15,00843, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $22.69 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, providing for the expenditure thereof in the 2010 Justice Assistance Grant for consumable items in the Bureau of Police. Motion, Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky. The council filed ordinance, bill number 15,00843, and now known as official filed ordinance, 22, 2013, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Coontse, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Council filed ordinance 15,00844, an ordinance amending the codified ordinance to the city of Erie. Part I Administrative Code Title VII Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article 147, Police Employees Pension Plan by amending Section 14701 and 14705 by adding definitions relating to disability, service-connected disability, surviving spouse, traumatic event, and amending survivor, and amending the provisions regarding disability retirement in order to clarify the requirements for such benefits. Motion of Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Jones. The council filed ordinance, bill number 15,00844, now known as official filed ordinance, 23, 2013, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Coontse, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Ordinances for first reading. Council filed ordinance 15,00845, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated anticipated revenue to be received from the county of Erie for the development of the city of Erie Comprehensive Plan to Professional Services. Motion, Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Rand Coontse. The council filed ordinance 15,00845, and have been read, is hereby adopted, and re- first reading at City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Coontse, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Okay, new business. Have a motion, Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Mursky, that the petition of Thomas Skelis and Richard Hunkley requesting the closing of a heating public alley located mid-block between Cherry Street and Walnut Street running north and south, some 130 feet be closed at the north end of said alley, is hereby received and referred to the City Planning Commission for Recommendation Report to run. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Coontse, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Jones. I move the balance of the agenda.
We get it.
We have a second?
Second.
Hearing none. Hearing none, Mr. Clem.
Roll call on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand Coontse, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Takes you to committee reports. Mr. President.
Ms. Coontse.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of comments for today. I attended the McBride Viaduct public meeting they had, the Blasco, to reveal the decision of the consultants, and a couple of things I'm hoping to get in follow-up to that. We have, you know, as council members, many of us were hearing the decisions at the same time as citizens. Some, I think, sit on the committee, the steering committee, but I did not. So, I was listening to the presentation, and I have no paper report or documentation on what's being proposed. So, when they're speaking of adding a, what do they call it, an interchange on Buffalo Road and things like that in lieu of the bridge, I am at a loss of being able to visually see and feel what they're talking and feel what they're talking about. So I don't know if we could do that through Mr. Clem or through the mayor's office, but if council could receive that written copy of their consultant's report on the McBride, that would be very helpful. Because I can think about it, but I can't see it and I need to be able to see all the recommendations. And they spoke really at the presentation about the three different options and they went into detail about the three different options. And then they came back and told us which one they selected. Well, it require us to remember what was in all three options and refer back to it, you know, it's a little bit hard. So, so if we can get the, whatever the paper report is that shows how they will re-align their, the intersections, they also talked about, I think they said that intersection would be at Pennsylvania, but I'm not entirely sure. No? Buffalo, yeah, but Buffalo and the Bayfront, where? Buffalo, where? That's, well, anyway, if I could see the map, I could see where they're, where they're gonna put all that and how that's gonna affect. They also talked about, one of the things that concerned me, they talked about the crossing of the Bayfront Parkway and we know that we've had kind of a long-term concern with pedestrians crossing the Bayfront Parkway. And I think if I'm garnering what they said correctly, there is going to be some sort of an east-west pedestrian walkway being built that's going to go over maybe some properties, require some property acquisition, I think they said, and also maybe going through a park or something. In any event, we need to be able to see all this. It's really hard for us to just watch a half an hour presentation and really feel what their plans are. And, you know, that, you know, certainly, I think we, I know that several of us on council are concerned about the closure of the McBride Viaduct and have some real fears on what that, the impact that will have on the neighborhood in terms of isolating and lack of traffic flow into the neighborhood. And some of the points the citizens brought up are really appropriate, I thought, in that I think the same, the people who drive on the Bayfront Parkway are not necessarily the same people who would prefer to drive on a McBride Viaduct. Because the Bayfront Parkway is very fast and very wide and, you know, you've got some old people that may be scared to navigate that road in order to get into their neighborhoods. So, I mean, I think we, we at least need to be more fully informed as to what's gonna happen if this is the decision and to really see this to be able to sink our teeth into understanding and asking our questions. One of the things I think I heard them say was they were gonna heighten the sides of the Bayfront, the walls on the sides of the Bayfront Parkway or the gate, or the fencing on the sides so that people wouldn't try to scale it to cross. You know, I need to see that because that sounds pretty scary. If you do make it two feet higher and someone stills bound and determined to try to cross and they're gonna fall into the Bayfront Parkway and get run over as well. So I think, you know, if we could get the whole artist rendering and everything that they've done in the consultant report, really appreciate that. And then a different topic that keeps coming to me is the graffiti, the increase in graffiti recently in the City of Erie. And we had, I had talked for just a second with Ms. Beck about that and kind of getting up to date on where the, the task force, the graffiti task force and how we can get that back started again. I've been receiving more emails and I think part of it's because one of my friends that's a tagger must have recently been released from juvenile detention and he's back at it again. So everyone keeps sending me emails and showing me his work. And so if we can get back on, on the track with getting a group, there are several people who've contacted me interested in getting back into combating the graffiti again. So hopefully we can get that happening. Also today, we have our SharePoint Training to get a little more comfortable with our using our city council SharePoint site. And this afternoon at three o'clock, we have a council of governments meeting out in Harbor Creek and will also be the Erie Area Cog. Council of Governments will be using a SharePoint site to communicate internally as well. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. Like many of us, I was at the McBride Viaduct meeting. I also sat on the Citizens Advisory Committee. And it was an interesting process, to say the least. One of the biggest takeaways that I got from it was that I, there was this disconnect between what the citizens on the Citizens Advisory Committee wanted and what the consultants recommended. And I really feel that I question the amount of citizens input that was needed, taken, and used in that final report. And I, one of the things that also struck out, stuck out to me was the fact that when they said the use of the bridge is the same. The use technically is to get from point A to point B is the same, but when you look at neighborhood development and you look at eight-hundred-plus cars being diverted from the East Avenue Business District and you look at since the bridge is closed, neighborhood institutions such as PO's Pizza, the bank that was, went all the way back to Security Peoples back, you know, in the fifties, closed. And part of that can be attributed to the recession, but I think part of it is also contributed to the fact that intentionally, traffic was diverted or unintentionally by the closing of the bridge, traffic was diverted from those business districts and it's choking that, that business area. And when people feel that they're not listened to, that's when frustrations occur. And I, I think that quantitatively, when you look at the facts and the figures and the numbers, it makes sense to do the cheapest thing. But I think when we look at qualitative things, such as quality of life, investment in our community, when you look at the willingness of the people to pay a little more to get investment in their neighborhood, I think we need to look at that and take it seriously. Because I believe in Erie, I believe that the symbolism of tearing something down is strong. When you tear something down, the symbolism is you're in decline. But when you build up and rebuild, the symbolism there is that you're investing for the future and that you're investing in this neighborhood, in this community. And I, I think that we have to do what's prudent for the city financially, but we also have to look at something bigger sometimes than just finances. And when you're talking a hundred-year span, which is what they say the bridge would be, I, I think that sometimes the cheapest option isn't necessarily the best option for the city. And just a few other things. Neighborhood Watch, so we went to the Mercyhurst Area Neighborhood Watch. We did meet with the city one time and hopefully we can plan another meeting with Brenda Sandberg and Andy Zimmerman and Mercyhurst officials so that we can move forward. The city's supposed to bring back recommendations to the Neighborhood Watch that we can try to implement. One of the things that they want to do as a neighborhood is start an association and as a way to kind of, you know, help mitigate some of the, the changes that are going on in that neighborhood. And, and I always tell them, you know, with changes, some things are good, some things are bad, you know, and kids are coming back to school now. We have an influx of about four thousand kids into that neighborhood and that helps the businesses in that area. That CVS is always packed, you know, Tim Hortons I don't believe would be there if it weren't for the college kids. And so I think that that's important, that we, we realize the balance there. But at the same time, they have to be responsible citizens, just like any of our other citizens. And they have to follow the rules just like any of our other citizens do. I think that's one of the interesting things in dealing with this is a lot of the college kids feel like they're exceptional. Because I'm in college, you should expect me to binge drink. Because I'm in college, you should expect me to publicly urinate. And no, we don't expect that. And so, and you have to follow the rules just like everybody else. And finally, last night was a good night, national night out. I made it to many of the events that were going on around town. I did not get a chance to get to all of them and if I didn't get to yours, I apologize. There were like fourteen or fifteen all in at the same time. And so to make the rounds, it was very hard. But the ones that I did go to, it was just heartwarming to see so many positive things going on in the community and it was a great time. And to that girl down at Lighthouse Park who beat me in that cup game, you're, high five to you because you got talent. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, we have, you know, we have citizens to be heard. So many different topics and, and issues and concerns, valid, some we're not sure how valid, you know, you had this whole combination of things going on during that period. I think one thing that we hear too often, and this is not, again, a personal attack on the individual, but I think it's important that as city representatives, as elected officials, that every member of our community is respected. And I, I felt like some of the comments that were made today were extremely disrespectful to some of our new American, non-English or English as a second language citizens. I, I think I get the point that the individual was trying to make, but again, those, one of the points that I'm not sure how valid it is. And then I'm definitely sure that the disrespect for foreign language was out of line, in my opinion, in these chambers and, and period, for fellow citizens in the city. If, if that approach was taken and that individual's on the receiving end of a disrespectful comment, we'd hear about that. So I think it's important that we have, if we don't have understanding, we at least have mutual respect. And what you don't understand, if you respect it, you don't, you don't mistreat it. And so I think that's at the baseline of all of our interactions with each other. We don't have to agree on everything, but we can, we can respect each other. And many of our new American individuals, whether it be from a refugee perspective or from a choice perspective, some are here because we're a great community in this country and we have resources that will help them to become as successful as they can or want to be in, in their lifetime. And it's, that's a compliment, I believe, to our community, to a certain, well, no, not to a certain extent, period, it's a compliment. Then there are some who drive Mercedes-Benzes because they were doctors and lawyers and professionals in their own country and they chose to come here to improve or to, to do something different and live their life by choice. And so all of those different reasons, people are here for the first time. And, and what I've found is that many of those individuals are really, 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 really intelligent because they speak, there were some young ladies from a huge family from an African nation and they spoke five languages, including English. I speak English and not always the best. And so, I mean, just to, to be respectful of, of what their abilities are because you don't understand doesn't mean it's not valuable. And so I just kind of wanted to say that because I, I felt a bit of disrespect to some of our citizens and I wanted to acknowledge that and say that we value all of our citizens here, whether born here in this country or born in Erie or, or from outside. And they have value to all of us. Just a quick report out on some of the, the Summer Youth Workers Project that we're kind of moving as a pilot this year. The students have been working since the fifteenth of July, three different nonprofit organizations in the city. There, there have been overall very, very hard-working young people. Some of them have never had a job and never had any responsibilities, so they're learning that you, you actually have to work at a job and you actually have to do what your employer tells you to do or asks you to do. And so it's, it's been valuable. And at the end of the summer, probably into September, I'll be able to give a full report to all of council and show what that investment did beyond just giving young people jobs for six or seven weeks of the summer. I think there's a lot more benefit that, that came from that investment of seven thousand dollars by this council. And so I appreciate that. Also, on Monday, last Monday, excuse me, I had the opportunity to attend Penn State Barron's Economic Conference and the topic was, or the theme was investing in our youth and had a particular focus on early education, early intervention in education. And it was very valuable information, myself and Councilman Evans were able to attend that. And again, it was valuable and it shows how investing in youth, if done properly and done in a holistic way, can be actually an economic development tool. And so that was valuable for us to, to hear that and as we move forward in investing in our young people. And then our young junior councilman, Hardy, it's funny, when he walked in, I saw his name, he went to school with my, my children a couple of years ago at Joanna Connell and now he has a beard. I think he had a beard in eighth grade though, too. I don't know. I think he did. He's had, his beard's more full than mine. But very nice young man, always was very respectful. And, and so it's, it's good to have you here and I have a degree in political science, so, you know, we can help with that. But then there's, you gotta go beyond, you can't, you know, you gotta go beyond just that. So again, thank you for being here and, and example of a shining young man in our community. Finally, I did have a very, it was a warm conversation, I don't want to say heated, but it wasn't fuzzy, conversation with a gentleman affiliated with the EMTA about the public hearing process. And so at our next meeting, we'll, we'll talk, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But just in relation to the public hearing, it is going to be the twenty-first of this month at our meeting and it's not gonna be a, a vent session. That's not what it's designed to be. It's designed to be an opportunity for the authority and decision-makers to hear what probably should have been heard before changes were made. And so we're looking forward to that being a positive outcome and a positive endeavor. Thank you very much for the extra time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. No council liaison meetings to report today, but I did want to talk about a couple of events that I attended. The United Way, Erie County National Night Out, of course, was last night. And congratulations to all the, the hosts of the events throughout the city. I think there was fifteen total. And what, what a great event. I, I did get a chance to attend four of those events, so was really trying to see people and let them know that they're doing a great job. And there was a lot of excitement last night, community pride and spirit is really, kind of a really, really nice event to attend and look forward to attending next year. McBride Viaduct Public Meeting, I unfortunately was out of town. I absolutely wanted to attend, but I was out of town, I could not go. But I am on the Citizens Advisory Committee and I've attended all the past events and I know a lot of the details of the prior meetings and some of the questions that are being asked. I've heard about some of the answers to those. But I did want to say a few words, you know, it's been published in the media, of course, you know, many Eastside residents and especially lower Eastside residents are not happy with demolishing the bridge. And I, historically, I think this bridge did provide a vital link between adjacent neighborhoods and did provide additional traffic to East Avenue. So, yeah, I definitely look forward to continuing the discussions and seeing how the details pan out and seeing what, what could be done. And definitely it's important for, for many people in the city and I definitely want to be involved and continue to make that work out for everybody. Couple upcoming meetings and events. McCollum Park is having a development meeting coming up on August twenty-fourth. It's gonna be at Deal School at ten a.m. It's a Saturday morning. And it's a meeting to discuss the Park Master Plan along with the forty thousand dollar grant that the city Parks Department received for, to put in a roadway and a parking area. And as part of that plan, I'm working on the committee, volunteering my time, that working the committee to, to propose the dog park and looking at the design of that and how it, how it kind of fits with the road. So I'm kind of working with the engineers, the city engineers working on that. And then following the meeting, there's gonna be a walking tour of the park to, you know, look at the area and to kind of discuss, kind of point out where things are gonna be. But hopefully we'll have some drawings soon so we can have people know exactly what's going on, what's being proposed and to, to further give their input. And that's it for my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three, four things. In these chambers, a couple of weeks ago, the Housing Authority of the City of Erie had their annual scholarship event. And this is an event at which they recognize grade school, high school, and college students who are outstanding scholars and who receive financial assistance from the Housing Authority in pursuing their education further. And it was really a delightful evening that the Housing Authority presented and the young people, I mean, this chambers was filled overflowing with young people and their, and their families. And the tremendous achievements that these people are making, many of whom come from very adverse circumstances, I think is really heartwarming. It goes along with the Councilman Jones comments about the early childhood education. So it all fits together. If we can catch kids early and get them on the right, right path educationally, there's really no stopping them in terms of where they can go and the things they can achieve. I spent a few minutes at the last Neighborhood Watch Council meeting sharing Uh, I spent a, a few minutes at the last Neighborhood Watch Council meeting, sharing with them the concept of the land bank, which is just starting to get some discussion, but it's an important concept in terms of dealing with urban blight, which is, of course, a key concern of the Neighborhood Watch groups, is how to control and manage blight. So, uh, I think that's an issue we're going to talk an awful lot more about in the months to come. Uh, others have talked about the McBride Viaduct issue. I attended that meeting as well, and I guess I came away with, uh, a mixed feeling. On one hand, I would have liked to have seen the bridge replaced, but I also recognize that that's a tremendous cost that we're unlikely to get the federal and state government to agree to share. And certainly the city doesn't have the resources to do it on its own. On the other hand, there were some ideas for pedestrian crossings, uh, Jessica mentioned that in her comments, uh, streetscaping and other things that I think need, need to be part of the solution. And, uh, I hope that as we go forth, we can see some of those things folded in so that we come up with something that, at least under the circumstances, is the best possible thing for the neighborhood. When I was with the East Avenue, Hess Avenue, a group last night at, uh, Neighborhood Night Out, we talked a lot about that, and I, I, I think we, we need to do everything we can to make that, uh, come out, uh, in a good way. Lastly, I just want to say, it's an awfully busy time in Erie these days. Uh, last night, we had twelve or thirteen Neighborhood Night Out groups wor- uh, meeting. We had, uh, uh, the Eighth Grade Tuesdays concert, we had a Sea Wolves game. I mean, if you can't find something to do these days in Erie, you just aren't looking because there's a lot of stuff going on. Celebrate Erie coming up in another, what, two weeks?
One week.
One week? Yeah, week and a half? Yeah, that's, so it's an exciting time. I hope everybody takes advantage of it. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first I'd like to speak on the, uh, EMTA, even though we took the, not we, but, uh, they relocated the, uh, bus stops off of State Street. Uh, there's still a problem with the EMTA trolleys. They refuse to pull in straight, and consistently every morning I happen to get behind one, and I'm in the right lane, I headed north, and I have to stop because there's traffic in the left lane because their tail is out. Now, it could cause an accident if a person is not watching. I have yet to see them pull straight, and there's room for them to pull in straight. So I just want to give them notice that I will lay on my horn tomorrow morning until they pull straight or pull out, one or the other. But that's a dangerous situation, and, uh, hopefully we spoke to them previously about it, but there's been no change there. Um, I agree with, uh, Jessica, I would like to see additional information on the Viaduct, uh, decision. Uh, this past Saturday, um, the Housing Authority hosts, uh, their annual youth golf and mentor program, and I belong to a golf group, it's called BLT Brothers Link Together, and we had about six of us, uh, volunteering, and hopefully we can get the total organization to work with Mr. Rand next year. The young man that I was paired up with, uh, we won, we came in first, and Mr. Rand told me publicly that he will select my partner next year. He told me about the golden rules. I said, "What's that, John?" He said, "He who has the gold make the rules." So that means I will probably come in second, third, or fourth next year. But we had a good time. Uh, all the kids received a medal, and there were some special awards given. Uh, John and his staff does an outstanding job there. Um, nine-one-one, I know it's not a city issue, but I, I need to mention it. Yesterday, well, last night, my daughter, who's in a wheelchair or either on her crutches, uh, had a client, she works for Voices for Independence, and she had a client, they were over at the square, over the park yesterday, and her supervisor was there with another client who were, uh, in a wheelchair. And there were two young men, uh, in the gazebo arguing, and of course, they were using all kinds of profanity, et cetera, and then they reached in the back, and each one said, "Well, I'll shoot you," or "I'll shoot you first, I've got mine." And hearing that, and they're very loud, and hearing that, um, she kind of backed off and she dialed nine-one-one. And the first thing she heard on nine-one-one is, "Nine-one-one, we'll be with you in twenty Twenty seconds, when you think somebody has a gun or they're reaching in their pants, uh, is a long twenty seconds. And then when someone came, of course, they asked all kinds of questions, and, "Did you see a gun?" "No, but they're threatening to shoot each other." And they said, "Well, where are you?" He said, "I'm across the street from the police station at the square." And they continued to ask the questions, I guess they have to ask. And she said, maybe five minutes went by, and, and no police or nothing. And she said eventually, uh, two detectives was coming on, was on their lunch hour, I guess they had food in their hand, and they walked right by it and came into the, uh, City Hall. And she said, about another five minutes passed, and then policemen came over, and there wasn't any guns, at least they didn't find any, but one of them had a knife, and they thought, "Well, hell, nothing we can do with him if he have a knife." Uh, I'm not sure, uh, what we can do, but, uh, I will check with the county on this nine-one-one, and they should have records, uh, of the conversation. And if she would have called me first, then they probably would have locked me up for running through red lights to get here. I would have got here in, uh, maybe twenty-one seconds. And I probably would have said something to one or both of those young men, and it would have escalated. And I would have probably been arrested, you know, protecting your daughter. So, but she did say, uh, two policemen asked her for the report, identify them, and they were very kind, they were very courteous, and assuming, same two detectives did come back on the scene, and they were very kind and, uh, respectful. So that's a positive, but I just don't think lunch hour is, is that important if you see two guys cussing, fussing about the fight, you know, you kind of stop it at that point. So my issue right now is with nine-one-one, uh, we'll be, hold on, we'll be with you in twenty seconds. Uh, in a life-threatening situation, that twenty seconds is a long time. Um, Mr. President? That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple items I have this, this morning. Uh, I also attended the Viaduct meeting, and, uh, everybody knows my position on it. I really wanted to see the bridge either restored or replaced. I wasn't happy with the recommendation from the, uh, firm of Kimball, but, uh, I'm still hoping before a final decision is made, there's different avenues we can still check, like get different bids out on what it would cost to repair or replace, not just go by the numbers they presented to us. Uh, I know people think it's, think it's just an Eastside thing. This is still a city of Erie project. So like I said, before we, uh, make any just final decisions, get our report from Mr. Kimball so all council can review and, uh, move forward from there. Night Out Erie last night, uh, what a great, great time. I did make it to a couple of them, I did have a prior engagement at a church function, and, uh, all the different Neighborhood Watches, the volunteers, they worked hard last night, but people got to realize they work hard year-round. Uh, they're an asset to both their neighborhoods, the city police department, as well as the city on the whole, and, uh, we appreciate the efforts you give to the city, and, uh, One Night Out is like a, uh, a thank you. And, uh, for all the councilmen and city officials who made it, I know we had some fire and police out there, so you got the support of the city, and, uh, we appreciate your efforts. Uh, regarding the mayor's mid, mid-year report, uh, there's a few items that struck me a little bit, which is good to know. Uh, the LERTA, some of these LERTAs have matured, which, uh, is great. Uh, four hundred and thirty additional this year, million over the next three years, two million over the next seven years. Finally, I know everybody may not agree with the LERTA program, oh, they're on LERTA, they're getting no taxes for whatever number of years, but as long as these companies stay and it works its way around, matures, helps our tax base, and, uh, that was one thing that I really personally wasn't aware of we had coming this year. On the expense side, uh, our overtime is down for both police and fire. Good to hear. Uh, that means we're doing more with less, I don't, uh, but it is good to hear that. Sewer rates are down, that's because our sewer rates are determined about, with our water usage. Well, people aren't watering their lawns or watering their gardens as much, so, of course, my rates aren't down because we still wash our cars, fill the pool, and do things, but, uh, that'll all come into play. But as long as our revenues are up a little bit and our expenses are down, maybe come the end of the year, we'll see a little bit of surplus that will help for next year's budget. Just want to, once again, welcome our junior councilman Hardy over there. We need young men like you to take interest in our city, in our politics of our city. We need young kids to get involved, and, uh, appreciate you being here today with us. I thank Mr. Merzky for, uh, sponsoring you today. With that, I'd say we go to Mr. Controller, but would you have anything to say there, Hardy, from, uh, your first official council meeting?
Am I really allowed to voice my opinion? Oh, thank you.
You're more than welcome to voice your opinion, Hardy.
Um, just regarding the East Ave Bridge, um, like I know you guys don't see everything, like how it actually affects people, but it is a real big issue. Um, not just so much people crossing, but like things that go on, they're on the bridge. Like, would you guys personally walk across the bridge at night? Just saying. Like, it's kind of scary for me, like just walk across the bridge myself, you know? So, there's no one controlling that. There's no way of saying like, "Oh, here's a safety thing." Like, like say something were to occur on the bridge and no one's there to participate in stopping that, how would you get ahold of someone? You know, like the cops can't drive on the bridge to, like, save that person or get an ambulance up there.
Good point. Very good point. Any other comments?
Hmm? I'm good.
Yes.
I'm thinking I'm good right now.
That's fine, but, thank you. Thank you very much. Miss Beck?
Good morning. Just a few things. Um, I did not participate in any of the National Night Out events last evening, uh, but I know Mayor Sinna did, along with many of our police and, and firefighters that were out and had a presence in the community. Thank you to the United Way for providing the mini-grants, um, in order to, to put these events on and get our neighbors out, meeting other neighbors and police and fire, um, into the community and having the kids climb into the cruisers and into the SWAT vehicles, I, I, fire engines, I think they certainly enjoy that. Um, Gridley Park had a rededication of the statue, um, thanks to Gannon University and the Gaines Program. Um, I know that Mayor Sinna did participate in that. Um, it was a very nice ceremony, from what I understand. Following up on Mr. Jones' comments, on the, some of the comments that were shared here in council chambers today, um, also I agree that they were unacceptable and, and not, um, the place to have that, that kind of dialogue. Would like everyone to come down to celebrate diversity at Celebrate Erie next Saturday afternoon. We have a group of, um, people from the Multicultural Resource Community Center, um, putting on dance and, um, singing, and there'll be fabric weaving demonstrations, and people from all, all of the, the fabric of our community that make up who we are will be here Saturday afternoon and just showing what they bring to our community and that they are working in and trying to be, um, comfortable and a part of, of the city of Erie. Um, the Inner City Neighborhood Art House will also have a display in the lobby of City Hall, so lots of, um, art from, from children in our community will be here. Of course, Taste of Erie kicks off, um, Thursday night, uh, in Perry Square, and we have a, a whole host of family-friendly activities in the Kid Zone, and thanks to June Pentia, um, for, for, uh, putting that together for us. That's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clem, you have anything to say?
No.
That's it?
Let's go to another meeting.
City Council now adjourn at, uh, ten-thirty AM, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rand, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzky.
Mr. Witherspoon?